Ready. Good evening, everyone. It being 5:30, I would like to call this a regular council meeting to order. It being Monday, October 27th. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And tonight, we have the honor of a young gentleman, Colin Kemp. He is here from the golf team at the high school. And he has placed fourth place in the state. Is that correct? Very good. So please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now stay right there, just one moment. Thank you so much. Did you want to say something? You're good. All right. Thank you. How nice is that? Anyone, you know, in the audience, I do want you to know that if you have anyone that you know, a student or whatever, that has accomplished something, please bring it forward. We love having them here and are very proud of our young students and hope that maybe one day they'll be up here. So thank you. Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Member Gutter.
Here.
Councilmember Hoimer.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Hilst.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Mayor Burris.
Here. Having a quorum, we will conduct business. Chair, we'd entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Phillips and second by Ms. Hoimer. Anyone have any questions, concerns of the agenda? Seeing none, council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, October 13th, 2025, as presented.
Second. Motion made once again by Ms. Phillips and second by Ms. Hoimer. Any comments, questions, or concerns from council on the minutes? Seeing none, council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven zero. We have now come down to item five, which is public input. Anyone wishing to have their voice heard, please come to the podium. Make sure the podium is on. State your name. And a reminder, you have five minutes. Good evening.
Know that I'm very grateful and thankful for all the things you guys did concerning 909. And a side note, I wrote down here, after much discussion about siding, I don't know what happened, but someone whoever ordered it did a very nice job because it matched up pretty nicely. Whoever that was, I was going to say, well, thanks for getting that right. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So thank you, thank you. And personally, I could not have done any of this on my own. So I want to thank the Lord and I want to thank the city council and SEFCU and Rhonda from Hanson Engineering. And of course, my son Shane, who's going to have a couple of words now. So appreciate it, okay?
You know what? Thank you because we don't hear enough, the good positive things. So thank you very much. Our staff worked very hard to help you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to say thank you as well. Because I know the last time we were here and went over some stuff, after we left, everybody was on it. So I really do appreciate it because that's caused him major anxiety over the last several months. I just wanted to come to talk about a couple of things that have been left. One of the things is they said they were going to bring in, he has grass now, but they said they're going to be bringing good fill dirt for the grass. And there is, these are just some of the rocks that I found in the dirt. But this is all over inside the grass. Boulders, bricks. They didn't clear it, they just covered it. So I wanted to bring that to attention. And then the siding, which they did a great job on, like my dad said, they did it all except for they left this one piece, super dirty and like brown from where it ripped off from the side of the, where it was attached to the apartment, or the apartment next to it. So I didn't know if they could fix that piece on there. And then the spot in the corner of the house, right here, where they took the apartment off and exposed his porch to a hole in it with the bird's nest in it above. They fixed some of it by putting plywood in there for him because they took out the windows for him. But all this stuff up here is rotten from where the water came in. And they didn't fix that, they only fixed the wood underneath. One of the most important things is I know it was a big deal when we were here about his sidewalk, that he had two, he has none. And we're going to get that done for him so he can do it. They finished everything, they haven't been back, and there's no sidewalk. So now, he's got to take it through the yard, which is better than it was because there's no three-foot drop-off but over boulders through the grass. So I didn't know. I know I called and talked to Simon about it, but I didn't know if that's something that can be done. Last thing, I know I talked to Simon about this as well, and it wasn't in the contract. But the way that the house and the apartment were set up, when it would rain, it would come down the roof of his house and filter down the porch and go on to the apartment and then drain off the apartment roof. Now that that apartment's not there, it's a waterfall down the porch on all the sides because there's nowhere for it to go. So I didn't, I talked to Simon about gutters, but he said it wasn't in the budget, or it wasn't in the contract. But I didn't know if there was anything that they could do for that as well. That's it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And is your last name Wallace? Is that?
Goble.
Goble.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yep, Matthew Johnson. So lots happened in, what, the last 45 days, two months? A lot of things to talk about. I only got five minutes. Home rule actually gives you the power to change that, by the way. It's a form of governmental control. I wanted to talk, let's just start here. I wanted to talk a little bit about Carroll House of Hope. It's a great organization, does a lot of good things in town for the community. It'll continue to do great things in the community. But I think, I think we got the cart before the horse on this one a little bit. It was at the last meeting, we were told groundbreaking was going to happen soon. And I don't know if that's really true because, what? That ordinance was passed in, what is it, 2024? And then it was amended in January 27th on a consent agenda. And it basically said, the amendment said that it extend the deadline for site plans and zoning approval by June 30th. And I looked today, I couldn't find it anywhere, but then it magically showed up this morning on the ZBA for the November 12th meeting. So need a little clarity there on why we're way off plan, why the ordinance wasn't amended since January. But yeah, we missed that date pretty bad. I want to talk about certainly the elephant in the room, 8.4. You know, I know home rule gives you that power. It gives you that power to do it. It's, it's straight-up governmental control at this point. Fun story. My father's favorite movie of all time, I kid you not, is Footloose. We all know the story, or we should at this point. It's a pretty famous movie. It was about a council who passed the law banning dancing and rock and roll within the corporate limits of the town. And I forget the actors, I mean, it was Kevin Bacon, but I forget the character name. He made a pretty compelling, compelling speech to the council that evening. It's the David speech where he quoted the Bible and all that stuff. Now, I'm certainly not going to do that. But this isn't a good look. It's not a good look. That's public property at this point. It was bought by public funds. And now you're going to tell the public they can't even go out there? You know? And then you're going to use the words liability in the ordinance? I mean, can we get clarity on what the liability is? Because you currently have the same liability down here at the riverfront. Peaking owns the lot down there. I can literally go down there and fish, slip, fall, break my neck, break my leg, bleed out, whatever. You know, the liability's still there. So we're going to cancel it up in Ludecan, but I can still do it down here? You know? And I'm certainly not saying go down there and, you know, cancel all fishing because that's just bad. You know? And I know, I know home rule says you can do it. And it's in Article 7, Section 4. If I can just humor, humor me for a second. It's in here. Powers of Home Rule, Section 6A. "Exercise any power and perform any function pertaining in its government affairs, including but not limited to the power to regulate for the protection of the public health, safety, morals, and welfare to license, to tax, and to incur debt." Morals and welfare is where 8.4 falls. And I just don't think it's a good look to approve that tonight. It's just not. And I know, again, I mean, we're going to talk about home rule in two days. That's going to be a good time. And I know home rule gives you the power to change our brand. You did that. You approved that. And so in
Thirty seconds.
In lieu of that, I know you're going to have this discussion on the welcome signs. I personally, I can't stop you, but I personally feel option two is the better welcome sign for the city of Peaking.
Fifteen seconds.
And then real quick, I see we spent $300 for some podcast in the accounts payable. Can somebody send me that link to that podcast, please? Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Mayor, if I can, I'll just answer his podcast question.
Just wait one second.
What's the story, Peaking? Just Google it, it pops up, it's right there. I don't have a necessarily link to it, but if you Google it, you'll have the link.
It's on my Facebook as well.
Yeah, that's the podcast.
It's on my Facebook as well. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Amy Hasty. I'm a resident and property owner in Ludacans Cove with property directly on the lake that's recently acquired by the city. I'm here to respectfully request that you table Agenda Item 8.4, the resolution regarding restricting the access to the purchased land and lake until proper communication and meaningful consultation with affected property owners have occurred. My request is based upon the city's lack of communication, the current property rights, and the impact on property values. To date, there have been no proactive outreach to lakefront property owners regarding the city's intentions for the lake. This lack of transparency is disappointing, and it undermines the trust between residents and city leadership. Responsible governance includes engaging those most affected before decisions are made. As a stakeholder whose property is directly impacted, I should not be learning about changes through agenda items or secondhand conversations. My property is also governed by a covenant that outlines specific rules for the lake use. And these covenants are legally binding and were a key factor in the decision to purchase our home. Under Illinois law, land use covenants, such as those governing lake access, they remain enforceable even when the ownership of adjacent land changes. So the city's acquisition of the lake does not nullify that agreement. Additionally, riparian rights, those tied to ownership along non-navigable waters, do not automatically transfer or simply expand because a municipality acquires the body of water. When I purchased my home, the lake was a private amenity governed by very clear rules. The proposed changes, especially the long-term plan to make the lake public fundamentally alters the character of my neighborhood. Restricting the access now and then following, opening the lake to public use later, it creates uncertainty and disruption. It will negatively impact my property value and the sense of community that's been built. The city's approach has lacked a phased consulting process that considers the long-term impact on residents and the neighborhood integrity. I urge the council this evening to table this resolution until a formal dialogue with property owners can be held. We deserve clarity, collaboration, and a voice in decisions that directly impact our homes and our investments. This could include a legal review of the existing covenant, a formal listening session or town hall with the property owners, mailing a survey to get feedback, or even creating a working group or advisory committee of property owners to collaborate with the city on the future lake planning. I feel as a tax-paying property owner and resident of Peaking that my neighbors and I deserve clarity and a voice in this decision. I'd like to work together to find a solution that respects the existing covenant, protects my property value, and ensures stewardship of the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good afternoon. My name's Tina Janese, I own 1300 Henrietta Street. And I had came to get a rezoning done for a double driveway for that property. I agreed to it, not really knowing the length that I needed. I was actually okayed for a 24-foot by 20-foot. That property sits on a slope. And there's no way to do it at 20 feet. And the only reason I'm coming in tonight to ask, or even coming up here and asking, I had jockeyed a lot of contractors to get to this point. And when my contractor came out and looked, he said, Tina, you're going to have to have that extra 10 feet. I would have to wait till next year to do the sidewalks, the curbs, and the driveway because I wouldn't be able to be up in here, I think, until December, which would, the ground would be too cold by then. And that's why I was just asking if tonight it would be, you know, okay to ask for that extra 10 feet. And it would, it would be the length of what the driveway actually was before, before it was, it was tore out. It would not pass where the apartment three would be. It would go right to the corner, right, even with the building. There's never going to be possibility of building anything on there or anything like that. It's, it's too sloped up, so.
And what was the address again? I apologize.
It's 1300 Henrietta Street.
Henrietta?
Yeah. Was that it?
Yep, that was my only question. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask a question of Mr. McQuaid, if I could, please. Is that what's in the consent agenda?
It is. 6.9.
The 10-foot, so.
With the condition the ZBA put on there for 24 feet wide and 20 feet back from the front property line.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because when she brought that up, I thought, that's not an addition to what we already did.
Yes, she's just saying, stating what she
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Si. Sure. Good evening.
I'm Kim Joesting. Just listening to what was said tonight about the Ludacan property and public access. Where is the public road to go there?
I don't believe there is.
There is not one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unless they want to build one from 98.
Yeah. Yeah. We appreciate that. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, public input is now closed. We now come down to item six, which is the consent agenda. Chair, we'd entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that the consent agenda consisting of the following items be approved. 6.1, financial reports as of September 30th, 2025. 6.2, accounts payable, paid proof list through October 20th, 2025. 6.3, receive and file fiscal year '25-'26 budget transfers through October 21st, 2025. 6.4, Peaking Police Department monthly incident report, September 2025. 6.5, receive and file emergency, procurement for emergency demolition of 215 Hamilton Street following a structure fire. 6.6, receive and file quotes for police department ballistic vests purchase. 6.7, ordinance number 4347-25/26, approving a variance request for the property located at 3723 Grandview Court to allow for the construction of a 42-foot wide driveway approach. Case is V is in Victor, 2025-09. 6.8, ordinance number 4348-25/26, approving a special use for the operation of an automobile repair shop with short-term auto storage at 305 North Third Street. Case S U 2025-07. 6.9, ordinance number 4349-25/26, approving a variance for the property located at 1300 Henrietta Street to allow for the construction of a second driveway. Case is V is in Victor, 2025-10, be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Fletcher and second by Mr. Abel. Any questions, comments, or concerns of that consent agenda? Seeing none, council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven zero. So we have now come down to item seven. I do want to say the lady that spoke, so with passing of the consent agenda, it was on there. You're welcome. You are welcome. So item seven is a presentation. This is going to be by Mr. Dubrowski. And it is our public safety pension evaluation and tax year of 2025 levy estimate.
Mayor, if I could, real quick, Councilman Fletcher did reach out to me. I just want to make clarification. This is typical. It's the presentation and all the explanation coming from finance on the pension information that he received, that he builds into this and kind of puts it all out there for the public and for the council to review. And then we will meet with council members individually or by twos in the next week or so. And this will be coming up at the second November meeting?
We're scheduled for the second meeting in November.
So it gives you some time to hear from constituents, gives you time to talk amongst yourselves, ask questions, and we'll provide the best answers we can.
Thank you for the clarification.
And following up on that, there, again, there's no action tonight.
Correct. This is presentation only.
We'll be talking about both pension funds and then talk about some scenarios for the tax levy. And then we'll digest that, and then we'll come back at later time. So to kick things off, I really like this slide for both police and fire. So if there's one takeaway for both of the actuarial pieces, this is it. So quickly, the recommended contribution for the police pension fund increased only 2.07%. It's a modest change that reflects steady progress. Assets grew roughly 3.1 million, which is outpacing $1.9 million in rising liabilities. So the unfunded liability is actually dropping about $1.2 million, and that's improving the plan's health. The funded ratio for the police pension fund improved from 62% to nearly 65%, showing solid movement toward full funding. The plan remains on track under the 16-year funding policy targeting 100% funded status. So this slide shows how the employer's share of the pension cost is calculated each year. The total normal cost of $963,000 represent the costs of the benefits that active employees earn this year. Employees themselves pay part of that through roughly $545,000 worth of employee contributions. So what's left is the employer normal cost of $418,000. This is what the city must fund each year, even if the plan were fully funded. So in short, this isn't about catching up on past liabilities. It's about funding new benefits as they're earned.
Perfect.
So the recommended contribution, that's made up in two parts. There's the normal cost, which is, as I said, the amount needed to fund benefits for employees that they earn each year, and the amortization payment. And that's the amount that is applied toward the plan's unfunded liability. So the normal cost increased by about $60,000, while the amortization portion stayed roughly the same. So overall, the total contribution increased 2.07%, which is a modest change. Shows the fund's overall position is stable, and we're maintaining our commitment to pay both the current costs and the long-term obligations.
That one's very good.
Bear with me for a minute. There we go. My apologies.
That's okay.
So this is the, oh, what happened?
There we go.
Okay. All right. Recommended contribution. The recommended contribution increased $53,967, again, 2.07%. The, what's notable about this slide here is that percentage at the bottom, the recommended contributions as a percentage of expected payroll. So last year, there's about 50%. Now it's decreased about 47%. As that drops, then it's getting to be more palatable as we go along. So we want to see that number decrease as time goes.
Yeah. Well, it just wants to be a little stubborn tonight here.
All right. Historical asset performance. So this shows the investment returns over the last 11 years for both the fair value of assets and the actuarial value of assets. So the fair value of assets represents the actual market performance each year while the actuarial value the actuarial valuation, value of assets, shows a smoothing of the gains and losses. It helps reduce volatility in the funding calculations. So in the most recent fiscal year, it shows a nine point three five percent market return, translating into seven point eight four percent on an actuarial basis. So despite some down years, notably twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, the long-term averages remain solid in that six point five percent ballpark, and a steady average supports the plan's assumptions and indicates long-term investment performance in line with their expectations. So while we talk about the recommended contribution, there's also the alternative contribution. And this is the absolute drop-dead minimum requirement that can be considered. So the alternative contribution is a lower funding option calculated under state statute. While the recommended contribution follows a hundred percent funding target, the alternative is about a ninety percent. The dollar amount stayed nearly the same in this scenario. If you see, it's about two point oh four six million dollars. So that's something that's notable. It's very consistent from year to year. The alternative contribution as a percentage, again, in this situation, you see, has dropped about three percent. So active members from one year to another currently has fifty-eight active members. It's up slightly from fifty-seven last year. There's some shifting in the composition. Tier-one members decreased by one, tier-two increased by two, showing a gradual transition between the two as time goes by. Total payroll rose from five point one five million to five point five million, about a six point eight percent increase, likely reflecting wage adjustments and new hires. The inactive members remains unchanged at seventy-four. Within that total, again, there were some minor shifts. The stability means that the pension payout population is steady, no major demographic change that would significantly affect the liabilities. And the summary of monthly benefit payments, total monthly benefits paid increased from three hundred one thousand at three hundred twelve thousand. It's about a three point four percent increase. Payments to retired members stayed stable, while beneficiary payments rose from about forty-three thousand to fifty-three thousand. The increase is modest and consistent with a couple of adjustments and some normal retire rates turnover. Again, last year, we adopted a policy. In the budget, you will see the recommended contribution along with some options for alternatives, the alternative and the hundred and three percent of the minimum contribution as well. Jumping to fire. For fire, the recommended contribution increased five point six five percent, or about two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, largely reflecting normal cost growth. Both assets and liabilities grew. Assets up four point two million, liabilities up three point five million. Unfunded liability decreased slightly at a hundred and ninety-three. The funded ratio improved from forty-four percent to forty-six percent, again, showing gradual progress toward full funding. Looking at the development of the employer normal cost, the employer's annual normal cost increased from six hundred and forty-four thousand to seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. This represents the annual cost of benefits earned by active employees during the year. When you look at the contribution breakdown, the employer's share of normal cost rose by eighty-four thousand dollars, while the amortization payment increased slightly. In total, the recommended contribution rose five point six five percent, consistent with actuarial expectations. Recommended contribution, the total contribution increased from four point, to four point nine three million, or about ninety percent of payroll. Again, it's a higher percentage that we've seen with police, but they're in a different funding position.
Yeah.
Historical asset performance, it's been a bright spot to in the latest fiscal year. There was a nine point six seven percent return on a market basis, seven point seven five percent on the actuarial. The eight-year average returns roughly about seven percent, which is in line with assumptions. The alternative contribution, the situation is four point one three five million dollars, and that's about seventy-five percent of expected payroll. Looking at active members, total active members decreased slightly from fifty-six to fifty-five. One fewer tier, tier-one member. Total payroll rose modestly from five point three three to five point three nine million, showing wage stability and minimal turnover. We see a mix of tier-one versus two, or two, and we're seeing again a gradual shift to more tier-two as we see. Inactive members, inactive population increased from eighty-six to eighty-eight, driven by two, by a shift with a couple terminated members, as well as other beneficiaries. The retirees and disabled members stayed relatively stable, which helps maintain predictable benefit costs. The summary of monthly benefit payments, total monthly benefit payments increased from four hundred two thousand to four hundred eighteen thousand, about three point nine percent rise. Retiree payments remained flat, while beneficiary payments rose due to a few new survivor benefits. And again, like the police, we have the same measure, except they're at a hundred and five percent of the minimum contribution as another potential option. So if you look historically at the funded ratios, this chart compares the funded ratios of the police and fire pension over time. Police pension fund remains stronger, improving from roughly sixty percent in twenty sixteen to sixty-five percent in twenty twenty-five. They were at a peak in twenty twenty-two, but then there was a bit of a downtick. They're on their way back up right now. Fire, again, fires built up from thirty-eight percent to forty-five percent over this course of time. Okay, so I like the slide two. If you looked at the overall contributions for both of the pensions, it comes out to eight point six six million, all right? Of that, one point oh six million dollars are contributed by the members themselves. Another one point two two comes from those normal contributions. The unfunded liability, okay, all those catch-up payments is six point three eight million dollars, right? So when you take a look at the numbers in this presentation, and if you were to assume the combined gross liability for both police and fires, about seventy million dollars. If you came into seventy million dollars of money, you found some way, shape, or form, all that six point three eight goes away each and every year. So that's like a nine percent return. So if you ever come across those situations, this is one area you would want to consider. Overall, again, if you were to chart this out, the it's about seventy-four percent of all your costs are related to this liability. So those are the things that are really driving these costs in association with these pensions. So when we look at the pension funding sources, we have certain earmarks. We have certain assignments that we have in place. So funding sources like the cannabis tax, the video gaming fees, the personal property replacement tax, a portion of that, obviously, the property taxes, they don't cover the full cost of these two pensions or the recommended contributions. So even with those earmarked revenues, the city must still subsidize the pension from other dollars within the general fund. Currently, that general fund subsidy sitting about one point seven million dollars, nine hundred seventy-two thousand for fire, and another seven hundred forty-nine thousand for police. As I mentioned, P P R T is one of these sources now. P P R T's had a lot of volatility over the last few years.
They sure have.
It's been up, it's been down, it's all around. So luckily, I'd love to see more dollars go there, but at the very least, I don't want to see the less dollars go there. So based off the latest estimates from the state of Illinois, at this time, we're anticipating maybe about forty thousand dollars more of P P R T next year. It's not the largest amount, but my main concern is the way it's been dropping over recent years, that it's not dropping more.
Okay.
But it is the state of Illinois, so I held my breath.
Wasn't there, I mean, it was actually a huge error that the state had made on P P R T.
I don't know if it's so much an error as it is changes in the tax code and.
Oh, I actually thought it was an error, okay.
Along those lines. It's, it, if anything, artificially inflated the pool.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I would say that's more accurate. But you're right. It's it, and since it was artificial, it was coming back down.
Yeah, yeah. I just label it as an error.
So last year, property taxes, how does that get divided up? Again, as you could see in this visual.
That's a cool slide right there.
Well, thank you. The city itself, now I, and I'm back up a little bit. So there's the city and there's the library. So the library, their debt, their operating levy, their bonds, the city levies it. We receive it. We give it to them. So even though it's their money, just like their budget and other things, we have that relationship with them. So I do split them out because you want to know what's related to the city proper and what's the library, and then they're combined and, you know, just something to be cognizant of. So the city itself received about eleven point two percent of the overall tax dollars in Tasswell County and in this area. Library comes up with three point eight. When you combine, it's about fifteen, right? The bulk goes to the schools, I think we all know that. And then about five to six percent each for Park District, ICC, Tasswell County, and whatnot. So again, there's a lot of people that are, a lot of communities, a lot of organizations that are getting paid out of, of the property tax. So next few slides, I broke this out and I brought it out together because it tells a story. So inflation, all right, we've seen steady inflation from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, grew about nineteen percent over that period of time, one point eight percent a year. It's the pre-pandemic rates. And then something happened in twenty-twenty. And then we've seen a massive uptick in inflation, driven by supply chain disruptions, labor shortage, energy costs, what have you. So long story short, because of that, that dollar in twenty-ten locally is about worth sixty-nine cents today, and that's a driving factor with a lot of what we see in people's tax bills, right?
So can I make a comment?
Yes.
So when you had the dollar bill up there, I hope everybody saw and could, could see and realize the very first portion, the red, that's what the city's portion is. Yeah, I want people to know that. All the, the bigger ones, we are the very first, and it's eleven percent of that tax bill.
Correct.
About eighty percent goes to the schools. Okay, thank you.
So I mentioned inflation, and what happens when, when you have inflation? Soon after, there's reassessments, okay? Because what happens in the course of inflation is when you see the impact on home values and you have the reassessments, and there's, there's a delay. If all of a sudden, you've seen a downtick in the economy and, and prices are down, prices are up. So again, if you see this chart here, from twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen, you see that little bit of gradual decline in equalized assessed valuation in, basically in, in your, your market value, home prices and whatnot. It reflects that post-recession stagnation that happened with property values. And then twenty-sixteen to eighteen, there was a modest recovery. E A V started to stabilize, and right here, it's about four hundred fifty million dollars or so overall. Twenty-nineteen to twenty-one, slight dip again. And then twenty-two and onward, we've seen the sharp rebound, again, tied back to increases that we've seen here. So that's inflation, and that's what ends up going on with E A V. So property taxes collected. Now, the property taxes collected for both the city and the library rose about fifteen point four percent from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-four. Now, the city levy rose only four and a half percent over that period of time. The library levy rose sixty-six percent, and it's far steeper. They also issued bonds, and that had a lot to do with this at that period of time. So that's where if you've seen a few years into it, where it's the, the bottom line chart, the bottom line goes up, that's when they're issuing bonds.
Okay.
By twenty-twenty-four, the library's levy increase accounts for most of that total growth that we've seen in the property tax revenue. Now, when you take this all into account, you have also have the property tax rate. So with the property tax rate, the total property tax is only up point five percent overall, so it's essentially been flat. The library's portion, as we've talked about, is up forty-four percent, but the city's rate is down nine percent over this period of time. And from twenty-nineteen on, it's down twenty-two percent in rate. So part of this all comes together in this spaghetti chart, which is why I broke it out individually. When you look at all four trends together, they tell a story. Inflation, measured by C P I, climbed sharply after the pandemic, which reduced the buying power of every city dollar. Property values, or the E A V, rose as reassessments caught up to higher housing prices, but not as fast as inflation, meaning the city's tax rate dropped, not because the city was taking in a windfall, but because levy growth hadn't kept pace with inflation. Those levies fund obligations, in our case, the pensions, and when inflation rises, the cost of those benefits rise too. So even as the city levies more dollars to maintain service levels, rapid E A V growth drives the rate lower. It can look like taxes are up significantly, but in real terms, the city's true revenue capacity hasn't kept up with inflationary pressures. Now, there may be some increase, but not to the extent that you see in that tax bill because of the E A V, because I, those are one of those questions that pop up. Why did my tax bill go way high? Now, yeah, if we increase a little bit on our levy, it'll go up a little bit. It's not that, it goes back to that is the bigger culprit. So I'm sure everyone in the room gets these questions.
Oh, yeah.
So getting to the meat here. When we take all of this combined, when we take the discussion on the pensions along with the levy, this table here summarizes the funding requirements for both funds under minimum contributions, city, you know, the hundred and three percent policies and hundred and five percent, and the recommended contributions per the report. As mentioned earlier, the sources of funding comes from, again, P P R T, video gaming, cannabis, property taxes, and other general fund sources. So here is the question for the council over the coming month, and we will revisit. How much should we contribute to the pensions, and should we consider increasing the property tax levy to help address the unfunded accrued liability? Also, we'll also need to evaluate how much support can reasonably come from the general fund sources to balance our obligations. So they're in one of the same. Either way, you're going to have to do this. There's the levy, and then there's these other sources, the find-it money. So that said, the next few slides might help with some options, things to consider. I like options. This chart illustrates the different property tax levy options that affect our ability to meet those pension funding needs. So the black dash line at the top, that is the recommended contribution, if you were to add it for both funds. The blue dotted line marks the minimum required contribution, that's about six point two million dollars, right? So in this, again, you have all those different sources. I mentioned P P R T, video gaming, whatnot. They're all noted in different colors here. The yellow orangy, pardon me, yes, I know, I'm colored blind, that portion is the property tax levy, and that white dotted area in the boxes is the find-it money. That's the other sources. So if the city levied, say, zero percent, we'd still be about two million dollars short of the recommended funding, and we'd still need to find those dollars elsewhere. At two and a half percent, which was last year's increase, that shortfall narrows slightly, four point nine percent, which is my recommendation on an increase. Levy raises to about five point three million, leaves a gap of one point seven, one point eight. It's very similar in funding to our current situation. Now, twelve point three one percent, and, and actually, the last one, forty point three one, if you're wondering. If you're wondering why those are so specific, that would be if we were to have the property tax and all of those earmarked funding sources match the alternative, uh, contribution, the minimum contribution and the recommended contribution, right? So, it, what if we didn't need find it money, right? And then finally, uh, 20%, which again makes a good dense kind of catch-up scenario, um, you know, it, it might help. So, again, these are some, it, picture paints a thousand words, right? So, uh, we wanted to get that out there.
Excuse me, Eric.
Yes.
Um, just to clarify. These percentages are increases over our current rate.
That is correct. Yes, levy.
The levy. But, but the percentages down here is increasing the levy by 20%.
Yes.
Not a 20% levy.
Correct. Yes. So, last couple of slides here. Um, this slide here is a table that shows the city's total property tax extensions, including overlapping county and library amounts. If you look at that highlighted line for 2025, it reflects what that 4.9% levy increase would look like. That adjustment brings the city's total levy to just over 5.3 million. The aggregate, including the library and their bonds, to about 7.1. So, recommendation allows the city to continue making steady progress toward pension sustainability, rather than kicking the can, uh, further down the road, uh, which actually caused some of the liability that we see here. As you can see, in prior years, levy growth was often, uh, flat or even declined. So, 2025, you know, the goal here would be, uh, keeping pace with inflation and kind of closing that gap. Again, it's one of the, uh, options that you can consider. So, the question is, for a lot of folks, what does it mean to me? So, this chart here shows the levy options and, uh, what it would mean for a typical home in Pekin valued at $135,000. And that $135,000, we, we were looking at the average home value, um, various websites and, and that's what it came up. The blue bars show the existing total tax bill for the city and library combined, while the orange and gray segments show how much of the annual cost would increase under each of those scenarios. So, the library portion has been held at its request of 4.9%, uh, while the city's portion changes depending on the levy scenario. So, a 4.9% city increase would, uh, in that scenario, the average homeowner would see about a $19 annual increase, roughly about $1.60 a month. That keeps the city on a, on a path where it can fund the pensions and operations without, uh, a hugely undue burden on the residents. Uh, the chart itself, again, breaks down the homeowner impact across all these scenarios from 0% to the full-fledged funding of 40-plus percent. Again, it's just to provide options out there for you to consider as we revisit those scenarios.
So, um, I do want to, um, state again that, um, you and the city manager are going to be getting, like, two, two of us together to go over everything, all the questions we have, really dig into it even deeper, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You had some cool slides up there. I appreciate that.
Mr. Dubrowski, could you give us paper copies of this thing, please?
I will, I will do that. Thank you.
I thought that's what you would do in that two-on-two presentation, but, so I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't have.
Well, that's okay. Uh, you know, if we have the two-on-two, I'd like to have it ahead of time, so not.
It's in your packet. If you want us to print, you want to throw it in your file. Okay.
Yeah, so we can, some of us are old school, make notes on that.
When we print them, we don't always have colored printers.
Well, that part's true.
So, yours is much easier to read than ours.
Of course, Eric, we know colored printing for you is pretty, not colored printing.
We will print and put in everybody's package.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Um, we have now come to new business. Chair would entertain a motion for 8.1, please.
Excuse me. Madam Mayor, I move the ordinance number 4350-25/26 approving and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Deborah Kotek for 8 Osprey Court under the residential development TIF incentive policy be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer and second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Deb Kotek recently closed on the property at 8 Osprey Court and is seeking the incentives under the residential development TIF policy. This is a new home with a total investment of over $500,000, $62,000 of TIF eligible expenses under the existing residential policy. Uh, the total incentive given from the TIF fund will be up to $62,000 in property tax increment rebates over a period not to exceed 10 years. The actual incentive given will be based on the eligible expenses incurred in the new property assessment after project completion. Staff is recommending approval on this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions from council? I just want to say, Osprey Court's going to town, building new homes out there. It's wonderful. Yeah, yeah. Any questions? Seeing none, council, take your vote, please. Oops. Motion passes 6-1. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.2, please.
Madam Mayor, I move the ordinance number 4351-25/26 approving a seventh budget amendment to the fiscal year 2026 annual budget be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer and second by Mr. Abel. Um, Mr. Dossi once again.
Thank you. This budget amendment comes after council's approval of the construction reimbursement agreement with Illinois American Water at the last council meeting. It recognizes half the total reimbursement we expect from the Illinois American Water in fiscal year 26, with the other half planned to be included in next year's budget. Additionally, the budget was originally prepared with the construction cost net of grant revenue from the I.DOT grant, $3 million total for this project. Our auditors have told us we should recognize the grant revenue and associated expense. So, this budget amendment also recognized revenue and expense for the portion of construction costs expected this fiscal year to be paid by the grant. Staff is recommending approval of this ordinance. And Josh and I think Simon can speak to this if there's any questions.
Any questions, comments? Sorry, I was making a note. Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes 7-0. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.3, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that resolution number 353-25/26 amending City of Pekin procurement policy number 21 regarding contracts with entities not in good standing be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hilst and second by Ms. Phillips. Mr. Dossi.
Thank you. Uh, at the last council meeting, uh, it was discussed restricting public contracts with entities not in good standing with the city. This resolution amends the city procurement policy to add language that the city shall not enter into any contracts for procurement with any entity not in good standing, defined as any of the following conditions. Delinquent in payment of taxes, fees or fines to the city or any governmental agency imposing taxes or fees with authority to do so. A defendant in any action that serves as violation of any state, county or federal law. Bankrupt or insolvent or in breach or default of any agreement with the city. All contracts moving forward will require the opposite, uh, entity to acknowledge they are in good standing and will remain in good standing during the term of the agreement. An exception is provided in those instances where the opposite entity refuses to change their standard form agreement. This is such as the Microsoft License Agreement and agreements of that nature. Should the city become aware of a contract where the opposite party is not in good standing, the city may declare a breach of contract and take any other legal actions as, as necessary.
Okay. Any questions, comments or concerns with the council?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Nutter.
Thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you for being on time prior to Halloween, as Mr. Vasselli promised. So, I just want to clarify, this is on all contracts moving forward, not contracts that we currently have.
Right. As, as we discussed, uh, on the sidebar, our current contracts that they signed in, into did not have that agreement. So, everything moving forward will have that language in it.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
And, and most of those contracts you talk about will expire at the end of the year.
Okay. Any other questions? Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes 7-0. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.4, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that resolution number 354-25/26 establishing rules regarding the Ludiken property be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hilst and second by Ms. Phillips. Mr. Dossi once again, please.
Thank you. Uh, now that the city has taken, uh, title of the Ludiken property, we've received some inquiries about, uh, public access to the land and lake. Due to liability and development reasons, staff recommend establishing official rules that would not allow any public access to the property for the time being. Now, uh, we just had public comment and a lot of that is, is very good points. And the reason the current home and property owners were not contacted is nothing is going to change for them. It is in their, it is in their deeds and the covenants that they had signed when they purchased their homes. That will not change. What we're, we're limiting is, we're, we have survey people out there working. We have, uh, a lot of things that are ongoing. So, some of the things that are going to be impacted on access to the property, hunting is one of them. Most municipalities aren't going to, uh, allow the hunting because of liability. That's some of the liability we're talking about. It's not just about going, uh, uh, out to the lake and, and casting a line in and go fishing. But, uh, to, uh, Mr. Jo Stings', uh, point, there is no public access road there. This is all part of the development phase and, and rules that are going to be forthcoming. And I would use, uh, Lake Arlen, uh, is a, uh, example, is that's not open to the public. That's, ends up being in, into the homeowners association. And when we sell the property and, and we are in talks with somebody who is going to be developing, developing the homes, that's the intent. We, we don't want to be the owner of the lake, i- is the city, and we would be, uh, offering that as part of, of that agreement. And my suspicion would be they would probably have a homeowners association or some type of agreement, so it stays, uh, with the property owners. But Josh is available for further questions on this and, uh, we can certainly talk through it.
Yeah. And I would think that, living on Lake Arlen as I do, um, I feel personally that puts the value of your home even higher because you have your own association and you have control of the lake, so. Okay. Any questions or comments from the council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Phillips.
I, I'd like to back up for, uh, some of the people out there watching, hello, everybody. Uh, the process that we're going through with Ludiken. It, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, we own it, but we own it in much the same way we own a stock. We have an investment. We've not actually put the investment within the city boundaries yet. Is that correct?
Correct. We're in the process of annexation.
Councilmember Phillips, just to clarify, approximately a third of the property, including the lake, is already annexed to the city. It was before the purchase.
It was before. So, the lake is currently within the city boundaries and it now belongs to us.
Correct.
Correct.
And the existing lake has covenants with the subdivision, the cove that's to the west of that.
That's correct. There's actually two sets of declarations of covenants, um, one for the Ludikens Cove properties and one for the Dawn on the Lake properties.
And, um, as said previously, anything we pass here does not change those people's rights to that lake.
That's correct. It runs with the land and can only, the covenants can only be altered by a three-fourth majority of the property owners. And the covenants are allowed by an easement that was recorded in 1999 and, and in 2000. The city as a landowner can put rules and restrictions on the use of the lake. But in general, we should adhere to what the covenant set up, which does have some restrictions for the lake's use. And I'd be happy to walk through those tonight if you'd like, but that's accurate.
But essentially, um, what, uh, you were hoping to accomplish by putting this forward tonight, uh, is, I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, that we currently own what I believe the lawyers call an attractive nuisance.
That's, yeah, that's a fair way to put it, I think.
Uh, we've got something that people want to come and play. And we haven't done any of the things that should be done. If they hurt themselves, we don't have any signs or rules that say, "Don't do stupid things on our property." And until we get those things, the lawyers will hold us responsible if somebody goes on there and does something ill-advised.
Correct.
That is correct.
And, um, and are we aware of anyone currently using the property who would be affected by this?
I don't know. Any, any individuals know?
Thank you.
Ms. Hoheimer.
This also protects the people that are already living out there. They're not going to have an influx of, uh, you know.
Rules and changes.
No, or people.
Yeah.
Coming out to go fishing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, from the, from the time that we started talking about purchasing the lake, the council and, you know, staff have been saying that until we have a plan for the property, we're not planning on changing anything significant. Now, you know, the, the hunting club is going away. That's been communicated with, uh, um, with the game preserve director, if you will. So, some of those things are, you know, rolling off, but we're, we're not trying to significantly change how the land is used right now until there is a larger plan. Because, as you said, Councilmember Phillips, we don't intend to own most of the land in the long run.
And we don't want to devalue anyone's property. By no means. We're trying to beautify our city.
So, essentially, if someone were to go down there to go fishing, they would be trespassing on private, on other private land to get to the lake, right?
Uh, not necessarily. I mean, there is, there is now city-owned property that goes all the way down to Sheridan Road. So, somebody could, could go from the public right away to city property to get to the lake. But again, establishing these rules makes it clear that access to the property, for whatever recreational or otherwise reason, is not allowed at this time. That can absolutely change in the future as we, as, you know, residential developer comes in and takes this portion, the lake, something happens with this. But, you know, that's, we've owned this property for a couple of months now. We're not, uh, we're not that far along.
Yeah.
And I think legal put it in simplified terms. City Hall's a public facility, but people don't have access to the police department. People don't have access to our fire departments. You know, the, the city offices are, are secured. Um, you know, there's a public facing portion of it, but the doors do get locked from time to time. Uh, you know, so it's, it's similar to that.
Yeah. And any, any other land or property that's owned by the city? Storage facilities or anything like that doesn't mean people can go over there and hang out.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Hilst.
So, do we have any liability on that property out there?
As in insurance or liability?
As in insurance.
Yeah.
We have a liability insurance policy that covers all that property out there.
Correct.
Okay? The houses that live on that lake that have their covenants and their rights and whatnot. Will there be boats allowed on the lake?
Yeah, the covenants do allow boating and fishing on the lake for those people with, uh, with property.
But I believe it's only trolling motors.
Yeah.
And they have rules governing that.
Yeah, use of lakes is limited to fishing and boating. Motors on boats shall be limited to small electric trolling motors. There shall be no swimming in the lakes. There shall be no ice fishing or commercial fishing in the lakes. Guests must be accompanied by a resident of either Ludikens Cove or Dawn on the Lake. There's talk about using the boat dock and, and having your own boat docks off of your. boat dock and having your own boat docks off of your, off private properties. There's some conservation easement around the lake that they're not allowed to utilize because that's got restrictions on it. I'd be happy to forward these covenants to the council if you'd like.
Well, there's also a fishing club out there. And I was told that the people that live on that lake have the right to fish that lake off of the bank, but they cannot take a boat out on that lake unless they belong to the fishing club. Is that fishing club still in existence? How long is that going to be?
So the Fishing and Hunting Club is going to end this year. You know, we kind of inherited it for the rest of the year, but it ends. As far as I understand, the folks that are within the restrictive covenants on the property are allowed to take boats out on the lake as long as they don't have a motor larger than an electric trolling motor.
Okay. And with that lake now being public property, if somebody goes out on that lake that lives on that lake and something were to happen to them, who's responsible for that?
That would be a legal question at the given time, depending on the circumstances. That's one of those what ifs. It could be a million different things.
Okay. What about maintenance?
Yeah, so there are...
Talking about development and someday that going back to being private property, but, you know, that could be a year, that could be five years. So what are we doing for maintenance while we currently own it? Is anybody maintaining the dams and mowing and those type of things that the property manager's been doing?
So one note I want to make about maintenance real quick is that in the covenants, it does actually state that the grantor of the easement, which would be us now acting in that capacity, does have the right to essentially charge the people with the covenants up to 20% of maintenance cost with some not-to-exceed numbers. And, you know, in 1999, it was $20 on an annual basis unless there was a quote-unquote "significant expense," and then you could increase it. So there's some ability for the city or a future HOA or something to, you know, include the cost burden for that lake, include those homeowners on the south side of the lake in that cost burden. As far as the city taking care of it, yeah, the dam, I mean, the dam's going to be our responsibility until the city sells it. When I called the IDNR inspector before we purchased the property, he said that he was out there, you know, on schedule, and there was no concerns about the dam. I would recommend that we, again, not allow public access so that there's not a lot of traffic over it because it is thin, for sure. Not really made for a lot of vehicle traffic, I wouldn't think, though I'm no expert. As far as, you know, mowing the property, I mean, along the right-of-way, yeah, that would be our responsibility until we sell the property.
So is the lane that you turn off of Sheridan to drive down there, was that part of the property the city bought, or is that still private?
No, that's part of the property the city purchased.
Okay.
You do have to get pretty close to a private parcel in order to get to the boat dock, but a vehicle can get through there.
Okay. And it says, "No public access to the property for the time being." What does "time being" mean?
Till city council changes the rules or we sell the property.
Okay, that's another question. It says, I can't get my iPad to pull anything up currently right now, so I'm just going off of memory here. But there was something in there that talked about if there were any changes made to these rules down the road, that they would be made by the city council without prior notice or a public hearing.
Right.
Why would there not be any prior notice? That was kind of brought up during public input tonight. Even though we know now that that's not going to change anything on their property, why didn't anybody out there get a notice about what was going on? And now it says in somewhere in this packet, "No prior notice again."
Yeah, I mean, just protecting the city's right to do with the property what city council wishes. If, I mean, if you'd like to set up that you have to go through, you know, a public hearing process or something, council is more than willing to do that, but you're not required to, so.
Okay. So the two main reasons we don't want anybody going out there is for liability and because of development. Is that correct?
I think those are two of it, but it's also we haven't annexed everything in yet, and we're honoring what the covenants are. It belongs, you know, it's, the homeowners are the ones that have the rights to it, and we're trying not to change anything that was out there.
Okay. Well, for liability reasons, I spoke with Mr. Jürgler. He said he's been out there since 1989. And he said in the last 36 years, with his hunting club and fishing club out there, they have not had one incident at all for any reason, which is a pretty good track record without having any problems out there, but...
And that's a fair point. He told us that, too. But when you start opening up to everybody in the public, you're expanding the odds that something will happen. In the 36 years, the majority of the people that are hunting, from my understanding and the many conversations we had with Mary Jo and him, it's the same people. It's been families, generations that go through there and hunt. It's the same people. They have a system, they understand it, and they honor that. But you start opening up to other people, that's when you have the opportunity for the hunting accidents or other things to happen. That's where the risk starts to elevate.
And I get the hunting aspect of it. Trust me, I understand that part of it when you start getting firearms involved. But the fishing's the one I just struggle with. But I think he said each year he roughly has 75 to 100 people that belong to that fishing club. And I guess everybody would have their own opinion on how many people they think are just going to run out there right away if they could and fish that lake. What about the farming leases out there?
Yeah, so essentially, Mr. Jürgler's leases that end this year, without some of the other revenues that he's had for some of these other operations, and with the contract, with part of the land being under contract for the technology park, he was not interested in continuing because it just essentially wouldn't make economic sense to do a bunch of the small fields surrounded by timber. So we had at length and multiple discussions with him over that. Of course, you know, if there's other farmers that might be interested in doing that, then the city could entertain leases with another farmer, but...
His lease expires at the end of this year?
Right. Actually, it expired, I think, October 1st, or no, November 1st, maybe, at the end of the harvest, basically.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
I think I just want to say once again, I think we're trying to protect the homeowners that are there and their property at this moment till we really, you know, are ready to sell it or change. And I think that I get what some of them were saying. You know, they have the right to know. They do. But what we're saying right now is we're going to leave it as is. And I think that we should let them all know if there's going to be changes. And I use the word "if."
Yeah, Mayor, I think, again, this is just status quo. It's kind of codifying what we've talked about, which is nothing's going to change for the time being. Now, when the city starts talking about rezoning properties or doing, you know, envelopments out there, there are going to be required public hearings and notifications...
Absolutely.
...that those folks will get, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Fletcher.
So maybe Mr. Rainey can answer this. Have you had complaints? Have you had complaints? Have people been running out there trying to fish?
Not that I'm aware of. We have a lot of complaints. We do have a lot of issues at Whitehurst, but the area...
At this place. Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Nutter.
Thank you. Just want to clarify something that you said. All the hunting and fishing expires at the end of the year. Is that correct?
The hunting and fishing club expires. Now, again, the folks with the covenants, in the covenants, it says they can fish the lake.
And hunt?
No.
Fish only?
Fish and boat.
Okay. So the Fishing and Hunting Club, I'm doing this for clarification because nobody got communicated very well at all. Hunting and Fishing Club ceases to exist at the end of the year, December 31st.
Right.
According to the covenants of the homeowners, they can still fish, they can still hunt.
No.
Is that correct?
They cannot. They can't ever and cannot hunt.
So because we haven't seen the covenants, that's first I heard of it today when I got a phone call, which, I'm sorry, the communication on this thing was not up to expectations. When I get calls from homeowners that had no clue what was going on, that's not fair. Those are high-priced houses out there. Those people have been there a long time. I know what you're going to say. We're not obligated to do it. Well, it's called common...
No, what I was going to say, Mr. Nutter.
Okay, sorry. Let me finish.
Okay, absolutely.
Common courtesy in an issue like this, which has been a hot topic in this city for a long time, ever since we purchased it, we need to be above board with everybody we can be above board. Because if a homeowner read what this says, there should be no public fishing, hunting, or foraging. But that's not what the covenants say. So they have a right to know. A homeowner does. If I lived on there, I definitely would want to know. I would definitely want to know if I got a piece of property out there I want to buy. What's next? Because there's a lot of nice lots out there yet for sale. So I think as a staff on something like this, we can do better on communication, and I know you will, so.
Thank you.
Were you going to say something, Mr. Ray?
Oh, nothing. Just that what we've told the homeowners is that we're going to keep things how they are. And I think this is, that's the point of what this action is tonight.
Yeah. I've stated it a couple of times here, and I'll say it again. It's going to be status quo. I, too, got calls, but I think when you handle the call in a professional manner, that calmed them down. Everything was okay. And I, yeah, I just, I wanted to state that I got calls as well. Ms. Phillips.
Okay, so has everyone said what they're thinking about this right now?
The floor is yours.
Ashley, I want to ask. I hear that the residents' concerns are addressed.
Correct.
Is there anyone else who is concerned? I know Mr. Johnson brought up that he's concerned that we should let the public run on it if they want to. Is there anyone who thinks we shouldn't go ahead with this tonight? Are we all okay with that?
We're just, well, here's my opinion. With not going ahead with anything, it still leaves us in limbo. With going ahead with something, we are telling the homeowners, we're protecting your rights that you have, that are in your covenant, and we are, we're going to abide by those for you. That's what's happening tonight.
Ms. Hasty, are you good with what's being discussed? Because I know you brought up the thing about the communication. As a council, I don't have a document about your covenants at all, so have no clue. So I know you've studied it, you've looked at it. I know you've talked to other residents. If you're good with this, I'm good with this. It's just the communication side just didn't set well.
I appreciate the clarification that Josh provided tonight. I would say that it's not clear the way it's written. It doesn't say covenant continues as is, covenant is status quo. It doesn't say that. It's not included in there, so that gives me a little bit of hesitation. And I guess I would like to see that moving forward, that there is communication and collaboration with the two covenants.
And Ms. Hasty, I do appreciate your input. And I think I clarified, too, that if and when, and I use the big word "if," changes are made, I think the homeowners should be aware of that. So is that good as well?
I think input would be great.
Perfect. Thank you.
The rules are going to come back before council.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and changes to rules would have to come to council. I was just going to suggest, Madam Mayor, if council would like to, you could amend the ordinance to include a Section 2.6 that all existing restrictive land covenants shall not be affected.
I think that would calm some people down. I really do.
I'll make that...
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion as stated. I'm not going to repeat everything you said, but pretty much that it covers the covenants. I know you can write it the right way, and our attorney...
Well, Molly is going to do it, yeah.
Yeah, the attorney will cover that. So if we put that in as an amendment, that it's in the covenants or follows the covenants or whatever, however you word it, I'm good with that, so I'd make that motion.
So motion to amend was made by Mr. Nutter and second by Ms. Phillips. Do we need any discussion on that? Are we good? All right, I'm going to ask council. We need to take a vote on the amendment first, and then we need to take a vote on the amended motion.
Can you repeat the motion exactly how it's going to be amended so we have it correct for the record?
All right. Yeah, I'll give it a shot here if you don't mind, Mr. Nutter.
No, that is absolutely perfect.
All right, so there'll be included a Section 2.6 that these rules hereby established shall not interfere with or adversely affect...
Ooh, you're good.
...any restrictive land covenants or easements that may currently exist related to the property.
Said properties.
Yeah. How's that?
Are you good with that?
All right. Is that what you meant to say, Mr. Nutter?
Absolutely. Just word for word. You took it right out of my mouth. Thank you very much.
Every word. Okay.
That was motion made by Captain Nutter.
Second by Ms. Phillips. So do we actually vote on the machine here, or are you taking roll call? Okay. Counsel, take your vote, please.
This is on the amendment, correct?
Yeah. Did everyone get to vote?
No. I think mine froze up. I haven't been able to get anything pop up on it all night, so...
Is Mr. Hilst working? No. Madam Clerk, you want a call roll? This is on the amendment. Yeah, okay. Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0 to have the amendment.
Oh, sorry.
It came up.
Yeah. Mayor Protem. I didn't think they called your name. I apologize. I thought, oh, okay.
I'm missing her right here.
Okay. Poor Karen.
It's all right.
Got it. Okay. Now, we are going to, do we need any kind of discussion to vote on the 8.4 with the amendment, the approved amendment?
Yes, amend.
Okay. Counsel, take your vote. We'll try to do it on the machine again. Well, wait a minute. You know what? Can you just do roll call because Ricks is frozen? Are we ready?
Yes, please.
Mayor Protem Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
No.
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst.
No.
Mayor Burris.
Yes. So that's 5-2.
Correct. Motion passes 5-2. Okay. It did come up if people are watching the screen. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.5, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 355-25/26 approving the intergovernmental agreement with Tazewell County for animal and rabies control services be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Abel and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dassey.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution's outlining the proposed continuation of intergovernmental agreement between the City of Pekin and Tazewell County Animal Control to provide all the animal-related services by the county to the city as outlined in Numbers 1 through 21 of the attached intergovernmental agreement document. The county also provided documentation of their cost per city based upon the number of calls titled "Cost Analysis" and a document titled "Four-Year Fee Plan" in the attachments, which details the proposed cost increases for each city during the 2024 to 2027 calendar years. The council had previously asked about the reclamation fee rates of other agencies in Tazewell County, and an attached is a document titled "Reclamation Fees" that outlines the fee schedule. The Pekin Council handout attached document outlines the services provided by Tazewell County Animal Control to the City of Pekin. County Animal Control to the City of Pekin. I can try to answer some questions on this, as well as Chief Rainey regarding, uh, animal control.
Any questions from council? This is, this is an agreement that we've had with Animal Control, by the way. Um, council, take your vote, please. Or, no? Oh. No? Call roll again, please. Councilmember Phillips?
Mine's broken.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hoheimer?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.6, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution number 356-25/26, approving a ballistic vest purchase with rail hair and be approved.
Second.
Yep. Okay. Uh, motion made by Mr. Nutter, and second by Mr. Hilst. Mr. Dossi.
Thank you, Mayor, this is replacing 24 of the officers' ballistic vests to maintain compliance with the manufacturer's recommended replacement cycle, ensuring officer safety. I believe a question was, uh, asked by a council member, uh, what happens if the grant is discontinued? Uh, then it falls under the officer's uniform allowance, and they would have to pay, uh, for the vests at that time, but right now, the grant covers, I believe, 50%.
Very good. Any questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please. Councilmember Hilst?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Um, we have now come down to, it's just a discussion item, the city welcome signs, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Uh, okay, Mr. Dossi, would you like to take this over?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead, and, uh, this falls under tourism, and it falls under Josh, so I'm gonna go ahead and have him present it for discussion.
Okay.
Making sure Mayor's ready, she looks like she's taking notes.
Pardon me?
No, I'm just making sure you're, you were taking notes, so I want to make sure I didn't speak before you had a chance.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, okay, so this is an initiative from the Tourism Committee, and also the Beautification Committee, they've been discussing updating the, uh, welcome signs around town for over a year now. Um, now that the rebranding initiative is finished, and we've got our graphics and everything, they would like to move forward. So, McDaniel's created a basic design, uh, there's a couple options attached. Beautification, Beautification Committee formally recommended option 1. Uh, the Tourism Committee preferred option 3, because they like the full badge logo, um, and, and like that it doesn't repeat Pekin twice on it. Um, so for what it's worth, those are for those, those two committees' recommendations. Uh, so, we're just looking for council's feedback and direction on the design, and, I mean, if you want to move forward with this at all, Tourism Committee, uh, did recommend, and council approved, a budget with $150,000 in the tourism fund for capital expenses. I think it's under a line called Land Improvements, or something like that. Um, and that was primarily for this initiative, so, uh, we got a preliminary quote, that it would be somewhere around $30,000 per sign installed, and we could potentially do then four or five signs, there's currently four, and, uh, Tourism would like to add a fifth sign out on East Broadway, if possible. So, if you'd like to move forward, we would, you know, prepare a, a formal request for bids, this would be obviously over the procurement threshold for just quotes, and then, uh, you know, any contract would come back to City Council for consideration.
Um, I guess I can start. I really like 3. Because it says, "Welcome to the Marigold City," wait a second, no, 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 is that number 4?
So, the first option has the Marigold City underneath.
Yeah.
And then the third option has it, has it larger.
Yeah, it says, "Welcome to Pekin, Illinois," and then Pekin, Illinois with the, the new logo and the Marigold City.
I should also say, McDaniel's did recommend option 1 as well, they just, from their experience with communities, having the city name nice and large was, was their recommendation.
Well, that's nice, too, I, I see that, yeah. Oh, so you like, do you all like option 1, then? Okay, we got 1, 3, and 1. Mr. Hilst?
Well, I didn't vote for the brand change, originally, because I don't particularly like the new logo or the colors. I like our old ones better, I don't think there's anything wrong with them, and that's quite a bit of money to be spending on "Welcome to Pekin" signs, when the ones we have are absolutely nothing wrong with them, and I think that money could be spent on higher priorities.
Okay, Mr. Nutter?
I guess my first question is, why do we have to change it? Why do we need new signs? These are signs that have been there, they're, they're beautiful, there's nothing wrong with them, they may need touched up a little bit on the paint side from fade, but I agree with Councilmember Hilst, I didn't like the brand, I didn't like the color, uh, the branding side, but the vote went 4-3, so, I have $150,000 in the budget, and we're thinking about signs, where we could spend $150,000 on the road in front of, uh, the Hampton Inn, and fix the road out there, so it doesn't look like a bombed-out, uh, war zone out there, which it does. And I know there's, that discussion has gone on in tourism, and I know it's gone back and forth, but they are a major contributor to this city towards tourism funds, so, I don't even want to change the signs, I just, I like what's there. Maybe we need, maybe they need landscaped a little better, and maintained, but to me, there's nothing wrong.
Well, that discussion with the road has been going back and forth, and we're, uh, getting opinions from everyone, so, I appreciate you letting everyone know.
The thing I like about these signs is, is the fact that they draw your attention to them. The older signs, I'm sure, you know, people probably don't even see them anymore.
Yeah.
They just drive right past them, that I, honestly, I don't even know where any of them are.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Phillips, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip over you there.
No problem. Okay, um, Mr. Nutter mentioned that, uh, they didn't like the logo, but, uh, the change was not approved, uh, you know, it was a 3 to 4 vote. And I have to say, I, I voted for the changes we made in the policy on how we treat our logo, and, you know, sticking to the policies. But honestly, you know, if I'd known that other people didn't like it, and I've heard since the last meeting, that a lot of people don't like it. And before we invest in a whole bunch of new signs, is it possible to go back and revisit whether we like this badge at all?
Sure, I mean, council could do whatever you want. It does not require home rule power to change your brand, by the way.
Oh, I didn't think so. Are you sure? Would our council look that up for us, may we change our policy? Just kidding. I, I would be open to revisiting the whole concept of the colors, and the shape, and everything else, if, if other people would like it.
I was just gonna ask you what don't you like about it?
I'm just gonna throw on your radar, it's, is gonna cost us significantly on the website, because that's what we were waiting for.
Oh, we got it on there.
And we delayed it because of this, the branding, and that's why when we went through, I, I wish this conversation would have been had by the council previously, because when it got passed, the website team with Civic Plus moved forward with the branding and everything, so that we could avoid further expense on any changes that, that come. Now, we would have to go back and, and, I'm sure, I'm sure. But I'm sure it's gonna be an extensive change, because you're changing an entire color palette, and all of the, uh, the markings and everything else on there.
I guess for the website, it would be another couple of, you know, maybe 1,500, $2,000. Um, I think the larger expense will be asking McDaniel's to do new, you know, new mark, new creative work, I mean, they, to go through the process again, I mean, it was, it was several, a couple, I don't know, $20,000 maybe, $10,000 or something like that, to go through this process, um, and they're not gonna do it for free, uh, a second time, but, I mean, granted, council, you, like, you can make that choice.
I, um, I was surprised when, uh, a council member said, "I don't like it." I said, "Why didn't we say anything before it got this far?" Um, I, I think it's cool. But, um, Mr. Fletcher?
I wasn't here when council decided to spend the money on that, and I voted no last time, because I just think the money can be spent better. I, people know they're coming into Pekin, the signs are there, I just, you know, I have a hard time telling my parents that are on fixed incomes that we're gonna spend $150,000 on signs.
Mr. Abel?
We've gone this far, now we're gonna change in the middle, it's gonna cost us money, and like you said, nobody spoke up before. We hear complaints about our website, that's gonna get changed and improved, and you're ready to do it, they're waiting on us.
Yes, I.
And now we're being the blockade.
Yeah.
No, this is about the, this is about the sign, not about the logo. It's about the, she brought up the fact, could we bring it back up? But the discussion is about the sign, and what's on the sign. So, I don't think we're gonna, I can't speak for Councilmember Phillips, but going back and going in and changing the website and everything else, that's, to me, wasted money.
Well, I think I said.
Can I follow up on that? I mean, I understand, and, and I'm not pushing this, but, uh, I also understand that we're planning on investing a lot of money in rebranding our vehicles, and every, all of, everything we put out, it has to have the new brand logo on it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not gonna, like, spend extra money to go out and change all the vehicles over, that'll just be, whenever we get a new vehicle, we'll, we'll get it with the new, you know, typeface and everything. We're not, we're not gonna invest, you know, $200,000 in rebranding everything.
Yeah. I just, I remember what I said, is that, don't be afraid of change, I think this beautifies our city, it, it, um, it's so, it's attractive, I think. Uh, I'm not saying that the old one isn't, but those signs look, I think, kinda pitiful out there. I think this is big and bold, and I, I think we should move forward.
I like that.
So, this is.
This is a discussion.
Tonight, this is a discussion item, correct? So, we're just talking about, do we think we want to put up newer, bigger, brighter signs? These aren't even our current logo, these are a few generations back, correct? Uh, six, one half dozen of the other.
Yeah. They just wanted our opinion, so this was just discussion, I think, um, we're, we're good right at the moment, if you're done with the discussion, we'll close that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really feel like I know what a majority of the council wants to do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure either.
You know, I don't want to go through.
Well, there was three of us, for sure, that said we didn't want to move forward with it, and I think there was three that said they did, and then I think Peg's kind of the one hanging out there.
I, and I want people to know right now, I was gonna say it a little bit later, how people are criticizing that the, the mayor has the tie-breaking vote, I do not, I vote every time, so.
All right, gifts of Diet Dr. Pepper can be left at the City Council Chamber offices, um, you can put them in piles, and which way you're bribing me to vote on those.
Well, you can't vote tonight.
I know, I'm not voting tonight, it's just a joke there.
Yeah.
Uh, being the swing vote, um, uh, so.
Do you have to do the swing down?
Josh, what, what you're saying is, you think that we need to go out and look at, maybe starting to get some bids on these signs, and you want to know which design we should be looking at?
Yeah, that was the goal, well, and also, I mean, again, a fair point, too, if you just don't want to move forward with this expense, that's fine, too. Um, the two committees want to, they've recommended it, but, uh, if it's not an expense that the majority of council wants to do, then we, we won't go through the effort to, you know, get formal bids and, and put it out.
And Ms. Phillips, the two committees are Tourism and Beautification.
Yes.
Is there the option that we do maybe a couple of the signs?
Sure.
This year, and a couple of signs next year?
Yeah, originally, the committee thought that the signs were gonna cost more, and they were only planning on doing the two at the more highly-trafficked intersections, or, or areas where the signs are.
I appreciate the traffic count.
Yeah, when the quote came back lower than expected, they thought, well, maybe we could do four or five, and just get them all done. Um, so they all look the same.
Well, while you're on that, so, has anybody talked about the size of the sign? And what kind of sign, is it gonna be electronic sign, is it gonna be a wooden sign, is it gonna be a stone sign?
Yeah, so.
What's it gonna be?
So, we're, we'll get a, a spec written up based on the concept, uh, McDaniel's has pre-heared signs all over the place, so, they'll help us write up a spec. Um, they're talking about, uh, you know, backlit, so, it wouldn't have its own separate, its own separate light out in the, in the right-of-way shining on it, it would be backlit. And then, uh, it's made out of a, um, a composite material that looks and kinda feels like wood, where, where it shows wood, but it's, you know, it's a composite type of weather-resistant material, I don't want to call it plastic, but it's, you know, it's, it's not made out of wood.
Resin. Resin type.
Yeah, um, I mean, I don't know the name of the material, so, but yeah, that, I mean, if, if you'd all like to have all those details before you make this kind of vote, we could do that, too, we could get the actual spec written up for you. And as far as size goes, I mean, we were planning on just going to the maximum height allowed by the zoning code, which I think is eight feet? I'm not sure. Yeah. Yeah, for a ground-mount sign.
Okay.
I, I'm good with doing that, spec it out, find out, what's a gun? Gotta quit talking with my hands. Give us something to spec out, because it's, it's bigger, smaller than what we got, we've definitely gotta follow the sign code, because we've had issues recently with that, so.
So, so would you like, would you like the, the spec for the sign to come out before we put it out for bids?
Oh, yeah.
And that's what you're, that's what you're saying, and then?
I think we'd appreciate that.
And then approve that, and then go out for bids?
Yeah, because maybe we want it bigger and better, or smaller and can't see it.
Okay, we could do that.
We want it bigger and better. Okay.
And beautiful.
Yes, that's right, that's right. Are you good with that, Peg?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, you've got your direction, Mr. Ray.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, we have now come down to any other business to come before the council, Mr. Dossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder, Wednesday, October 29th, 6:00 PM, uh, we're gonna host a town hall, we're gonna discuss home rule. I know it's a hot topic, I anticipate people want to pack the house, but we are gonna have other meetings, so, uh, we do have a fire code, and I can only have so many people in the council chambers, so just a reminder of that.
But we will have, uh, multiple meetings regarding that discussion, as well as other topics,
uh, as we move forward. 11-6, uh, is a Thursday, November 6th, uh, it's business after-hours at the Salvation Army from 4:30 to 6:00. I will be gone the week of the 10th, and I will have somebody in charge to run the council meeting that night, I know you'll miss me.
Yes, indeed.
Uh, Corey Price, uh, uh, from the Fire Department, just a shout-out to him, uh, third best in the world, uh, in the Fire Fired or Combat Challenge, he brought home the bronze medal.
Awesome.
That was out on their social media. And just to, uh, talk a little bit about the Carol House of Hope, and, uh, some things that were brought up in public discussion, uh, I know, right now, there's some people that want to throw out that it's a home rule issue, that, that got in that, and that, that is not the case in this, and, uh, I believe it's gonna be coming up very soon, I know that there's site plan, Nick, if you, or Josh, if you want to talk about it, is in, um, there's been some review, uh, you know, they're not a for-profit organization, that all the funding that, that they are paying for out of their pocket on this is raised through the community and the public, so, um, they do provide a service, uh, to the community that's, um, needed, and I think, uh, that will be brought up in here, and yes, we will get that addressed. They brought up the podcast, "What's the Story Pekin?", this has been out there for a long time, it used to be paid for through the chamber, we ended up taking that all over, and Josh can maybe bring that up a, a, a little bit, but that, that's the cost, that's the cost, whether we did it ourselves or we do it through them, we're just paying for what it costs to use the editing software, and when you post it to the platform, the podcast platform, they charge an annual, or they charge a fee, and that's, that's what we pay, we pay the cost. And Josh can speak a little bit more on that if you can.
Yeah, sure. So it's, you know, Gary Gillis hosts it, we don't pay Gary anything, we just pay for the processing and uploading and, and maintenance on Spotify and those types of things. We inherited it, I, I don't know how far back it goes, certainly before me, but it used to be part of the tourism fund expenses. It's not really an eligible tourism expense, so we pulled it out of there to stay in line with, with state law and the city code, and then it, it wasn't paid for by the chamber, but it was paid through the chamber, so they, they used to run kind of all the tourism stuff, and they would send us, you know, invoices for reimbursement of costs, this was one of those. And so, you know, as we move towards more transparency and, and the city having staff to do these things, it doesn't go through the chamber anymore, we just pay most of those expenses direct now. So that's the history on it, and, you know, council wants to keep it, great, if you don't, just let us know.
And, and we did start putting the numbers of, of downloads, there, I think the last one, there was over seven thousand, so it's, it's popular, people in here, and I anticipate after tonight, we sent the link to Mr. Johnson, it'd be over even more going on to this now and listening to the different things.
It's to me, and I, I send it right out.
And they talk about everything going on in Pekin, from things going on to school, to the new developments, the home rule, they talk, there's a lot of different discussions out there.
Ms. Phillips, were you wanting to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification, who's talking on the podcast?
So Gary Gillis is the host, and then he invites people to come speak about a topic, so I've been on it, John's been on it, Mayor's been on it, people from the schools have been on it, other individuals.
Depending on what's going on, he'll, he'll-
Carroll with the House of Hope have been on there.
Yeah, House of Hope's been on there.
Yeah.
And it's a hundred dollars an episode.
Is it, I'm trying to think of who else has been on there, a lot. All right, anything else from staff?
That's it, Mayor.
Mr. Hilst?
Yeah, I just got one quick question in regards to the bulk pickup stickers. So under Section three-one-two-three, B-two, it says, "An additional fee of ten dollars will be charged for each bulk item collected, which will be added to the resident's monthly invoice." And it was brought to my attention that somebody came down here to get one of those stickers, asked to put that ten dollars on their monthly invoice, and they were told that that was not gonna happen, they had to pay with cash or a card. So my question is, is everybody at the counter aware that that language is in our city code and that's supposed to be added to our monthly invoice?
I'll have to look into that and get back to you on it. I'll, I'll double-check, make sure, and then the feasibility of that as well.
But that should be allowed, though, correct?
It's in our code.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Hilst?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Nutter?
Nine oh-nine Court Street, a lot of comments about not completed or something. Are, are you on top of it to try to get it updated because we already paid River City? So I guess I was kinda shocked that we had unfinished work on there, so just enlighten me.
Yeah, so the, I think the three or four of the, the issues he brought up were, I mean, not in the contract, not agreed to be, to be done, some issues that, that, that he had, so like the color, or that one little piece of siding, the color of it, the wood, I believe, is actually on the existing structure, not what was added to, the rotted piece there. The only one that we're kinda going back, back and forth on is we did have a, there was, early on, I believe, a verbal with Mr. Global, while that frontage area had not been re-leveled to provide a, a carriageway essentially, so that he, he would have the ability to take his trash out to Court Street. So I'm, we're discussing that with Justin and kinda come up some options as a possibility.
Okay. I'm just glad we're gonna get that thing behind us.
I'm so sorry I got the, the wrong name there, but neither the father or the son came up and said their name. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, Ms. Phillips?
Anybody have anything you wanna talk about? Once again, I wanna thank all of you for your time tonight, and I hope you've had as much fun as we have, and look forward to seeing you at the upcoming events.
Mr. Fletcher?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Abel?
I had, it's been brought to my attention, and I had talked to Carol Marner about it out at the fundraiser for the House of Hope.
Yeah, that was nice.
Some people, well, they say that we're gonna, they're, people that backed them or heard that the city's gonna take the land back. I said, "Why would we do that? Developers aren't exactly knocking down the doors to develop that piece of property."
Yeah.
This is of first interest in decades, and like we talked about earlier, they don't have the pockets private companies do to go out and make things happen yesterday.
Yeah.
So there has been some slowdowns on it, not all their fault, but-
Correct.
Between architects and lawyers and all that stuff, so it's gonna happen, but I just, these people thought that were major, were big backers of them, were heard that we're gonna take the land back, we got somebody else wants it, not that I know of.
It was a great fundraiser for them, by the way, too. Ms. Hoheimer?
I just would like to say congratulations to Jack Steger, forty years. He's been working at the family business, Pekin, been here forever, Steger's Furniture, and just a shout-out there to-
Eighty-eight years.
Yep. Shout-out to Jack for forty years there.
Very good, thank you. I already said about the mayor's voting, but I wanna thank Eric for the presentation for the pensions, and Rich White was going to be here, but he had, first of all, he was gonna be here last time, he got very sick. He's got some other obligations who will be coming in December, are, I believe, the first meeting in December, to present, it's called IPOPH, so that is the investment fund of all the downstate police, fire, I didn't get ahold of them yet because they actually have to travel. Mr. Rundelman, where is that office located? I, I thought it was like two hours, two and a half hours, and I thought, I'm not gonna have them come down. It will be similar as far as what they're doing with the, the investments and how well it's doing. So I look forward to hearing from Mr. White as well. Other than that, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr.- We're not, we don't have executive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, that's okay. No executive tonight. Do we need to do roll call? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Thank you, we are adjourned. Josh, this was nice. Yeah.